Good afternoon.
Waters?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
O'Kane?
Here.
Shaner?
Here.
Scott?
Here. Can we stand for a moment of silence for our follow by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, this computer isn't working anyway, so... It's actually my city council computer.
Whereas one in three Sioux City residents are at the risk of kidney disease and one in seven residents have kidneys disease with only 10% being aware of it. Whereas it is critical that attention be brought to the often overlooked but increasingly common disease. Major risk factors are diabetes, high blood pressure, a family history of kidney failure over the age of 60. Whereas the National Kidney Foundation represents Sioux City patients, transplants recipients, people affected by kidney disease and their family members. And whereas the month of March is National Kidney Month and March 10th, 2022 is World Kidney Day. Now therefore I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of city council, to hereby proclaim March 22 as National Kidney Awareness Month and call upon the citizens of Sioux City to take care of their kidneys and get tested if they are at risk.
Thank you very much. My name is Jeanne Dickey. I'm the Executive Director for the Dakotas, Iowa, Nebraska, for the National Kidney Foundation. We thank you for bringing awareness to this cause, which is very near and dear to my heart as a two-time transplant recipient myself, as well as being an executive director. We know as a states that one in three Americans are at risk and one in seven have it, less than 10% being diagnosed. So Thursday will be World Kidney Day and we are asking people to wear orange as our color of awareness, to bring awareness to this. And then locally also the Warrior Hotel will be orange that evening, lit up. So again, we thank you very much for your support in bringing awareness to this cause.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Interviews for the city council, appointed boards, commissioning committees, the environmental advisory board, Ryan Roseboom, come up and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to serve.
My name's Ryan Roseboom. I've lived in the area for most of my life. I moved back here two years ago and I teach at North Middle School in Sioux City. I teach science. We have an environmental club at the school that I run and it's just a passion of mine to get involved and help out in any way that I can.
Thank you for applying. It seems like a natural course for you to go in that direction. If you're gonna get on a committee, awesome.
I think, I think it'll go well. It's just good to kinda go out and help the communities.
It is, it is. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Gillian Kosovo, Sister City Committee, Christopher Broxelby?
Hello, Christopher Broxelby. I wanted to apply for this committee. I just got back from Kosovo with the HHT, First of the 113th Cavalry, where I spent a lot of time in the city of Jolene. Actually met with the ex-mayor twice as part of the Iowa Guard. So I think this is just a good opportunity to roll over current training and help better the city.
Good.
I think it's an excellent opportunity. I'm really pleased that you applied. Thank you.
Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
And hopefully continued service in this capacity.
I hope so. It'll be a lot of fun. It's a great city.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Today, the items three through 14 are the consent agenda, considering to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is requested by a council member. If you want to speak on an item, please come up as I read it. State your name and address for the record. If you want to come up on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. I'll move the consent agenda. Second, three is a reading of the city council minutes of February 28th and March 1st. Four is a resolution adopting plans and specifications for the Discovery Parking Ramp Lighting renovation project. Exactly what is this project? Oh, you have to come to the microphone. You gotta get used to coming up.
I do.
I'm doing this because this is an easy one for you.
Thank you. I appreciate your kindness on this. Tiffany Claiborne, I'm the parking supervisor, but we've had the original lighting in the Discovery Parking Ramp and we want to put new LED lighting in it.
All right.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Five is a resolution amending the Position Classification Manual by approving an updated job description for Seasonal Engineering Aid Position. In the future, when we put these up and we're kinda changing these, can we put the pay scale in there? Because I don't think you did, did you? Or did I miss it? I looked on the actual job description, so I might have missed it.
Jill Burtrand, Human Resources Director. I had one of my staff members that wrote this for me and normally in the discussion I will, when I do them, indicate if there is a monetary difference. It's also mentioned in the financial impact, however, this one is just a minimum qualification change, so there is no salary, but...
Thank you.
I'll catch that next time.
I just thought, I thought it usually identified under the financial impact.
Yeah.
Thank you. Six, a resolution fixing the assessed amount against private property and leveling the schedule of assessments for the weed abatement program. Seven are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution accepting a grant from the Federal Transit Administration for funding under the American Rescue Plan Act. B is a resolution accepting the grant agreement authorized by the Department of Housing and Urban Development under the Healthy Homes Production Grant Program. Eight are civil...
I would like to just make a couple of comments, Jill. First of all, congratulations on getting this grant. It's about, what, a million and a half million dollars? And it will serve, I think you put in the write-up, over 100 homes for radon remediation. And what else was there? There's radon and...
Jill Waterside Neighborhood Services Manager. Yes, radon, lead-based paint, any other health and safety items. So this is a new grant for us. Really excited.
And it's really because of, it's because of our older housing stock. That's what your target...
Older housing stock and then also we have higher levels of radon here, so our application scored higher.
Yes.
What's the dollar amount?
What was really impressive is it was highly competitive application process. It said 60 awards were made nationwide and we're one of those. 1.5 million. One and a half million dollars. I mean, it's just...
Are you gonna test the radon? You have somebody qualified?
We're gonna have three of our staff trained and then we're gonna buy the equipment, two pieces of equipment, that will rotate in and out of homes. A little more cost effective than hiring it out.
You said this is over the course of 42 months.
Yes.
Takes some time. But congratulations.
Thank you. Very exciting.
Getting this grant.
Eight are civil penalties and suspensions. A is a resolution assessing a $500 civil penalty against teachers, gentlemen's club for violation of the liquor laws. B is a resolution assessing a $500 civil penalty against Soho for violation of the liquor laws. C is a...
Mayor?
Yes.
Abstain from eight B, please.
C is a resolution assessing a $500 civil penalty against Axle Grind for violation of the liquor law. Nine are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution granting permit to Fiber Com to maintain underground cable in the Houlihan Run Corridor. B is a resolution authorizing a service provider agreement to Mosack's Furniture and Floors for the Sioux Gateway Terminal Service Area Carpet Project. C is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Reich Painting and Decorating for the Grandview Park Bandshell.
Mayor, I just want to comment on that. I'm really excited that this project's gonna be started and Matthew, he have in here, completed by June 19, 2022. That'll really dress the place up for the summertime. Thank you.
E is a resolution approving amendment number one to the Work Order Number 44 with R S and H for Taxiway A Reconstruction Project at the Airport. Ten are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution approving a partial settlement of a tort claim and authorizing payment. B is a resolution approving a change order number one and authorizing payment to BX Civil and Construction for Taxiway A Reconstruction Project at the Airport. C is a resolution approving payment of a judgment against the city of Sioux City. Eleven are actions relating to property. Eleven, A through D are resolutions scheduling hearing on the proposed amendment and restated plans for Teton, Combined Central Sioux City, CBD Downer Park, and the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Project Areas. Twelve are purchasing. A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Ed Stivers Ford for two Ford all-wheel-drive X-Peds. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Motorola for eight radios and microphones, two Malday unit chargers and batteries for the Iowa Task Force One Urban Search and Rescue. Thirteen are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list come forward if you have questions. Fourteen receipt amendments. See the list come forward if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Passes five, zero, fifteen. Hearing and ordinance adopting a site plan for 161620 Pacific Street. Petitioners Bacon Creek Design, P&amp;Z recommends approval with conditions. I'll move that. Second, public hearing is now open.
Jason Gary with planning zoning. As before you, we've dealt with this issue before. We've come back with a site plan, requested site plan for, it's a general industrial district, but we came back with restrictions for use and then also for design standards. When we heard from the petitioner's engineer at the time, we essentially heard that, you know, fairly good dialogue that essentially this is gonna kinda match the building on Cunningham Drive, which had design standards and were fine with that building. And then also, as it relates to buffer yard setbacks, we approved easing those restrictions. And so it went pretty smooth at planning zoning level and there was nobody from the public who spoke before or against it.
Anyone else?
Paul Koskovich, 3471, wanna make her way. My partner and I couldn't attend the meeting, so I don't think we really fairly relayed our message via Bacon Creek. We don't necessarily agree with this. We brought this to you folks, I don't know, a month ago about the design standards and making this GI with no design standards. I made a slideshow here. I wanted to show some different images if possible.
Well, did you submit something that they approved? Now you don't wanna...
So I was, I was kinda confused. Like, so we, I thought we had council approval for GI and then I guess it went back to planning and zoning and now, I mean, I'm confused here. Because like I said, I thought we left it here that we had GI, no design standards, and now I don't think that's the case.
Go ahead.
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. As the applicant, Paul Koskovich had stated, the council did approve the GI request for the rezoning on this property. The applicant had applied for GI, Planning and Zoning Commission and staff had made a recommendation for BP, which is Business Park. Council voted with the petitioner to rezonate GI with the contingency that the applicant had to submit for a site plan through P&amp;Z and council, so that's where we're at today. That site plan was submitted by the applicant through Bacon Creek. At the time, there were some deficiencies in the site plan. Those have already all been met. As an example, one was the addition of a snow storage area. Also, one was for the driveway width. Those items have been fixed since the hearing of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as the landscaping has been added on the east side of the building. But as part of the approval process and the recommendation from P&amp;Z and all that, Jason as a chairperson chiming in as well, they added into their approval process that they had to meet the design standards as if the building was located in the Business Park zoning district. And so I think that's where the applicant is stating he doesn't agree that he has to meet the design standards as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
When, when we left here, we had approval and we were asked to go back to P&amp;Z, which I don't, I don't think accomplished anything, right? We left here and now they're gonna say, okay, we can have GI like we want, but by giving you GI, we're not gonna hold you to the same standard. They're gonna go above and beyond and we're back to where we're at is they want us to have design standards for our building that should not be applied. So I put this slideshow together because the design standards revolve around no corrugated metal and I wanna bring everyone up to speed with how corrugated metal can be used and can be good looking on a building. On this building right here, this is corrugated metal. I mean, that's, I think everyone would say that's a sharp-looking building, but under these design standards, corrugated metal cannot be used.
I think the consensus sometimes is when people think of corrugated metal, they think of a Morton Building, you know? And so your display is gonna show us differently.
Yes.
But I, I think that's what people think of when they say, oh, they're gonna put a corrugated metal building up. They think of a machine shed type building.
So that's corrugated metal there.
Right.
The left is corrugated metal. That's all corrugated metal with the exception of the brown facade on the left and around the entrance on the left. Above the stone on the right, that's all corrugated metal. Up top left, that's corrugated metal. Above the windows is corrugated metal. Now, I mean, if someone doesn't say that's a sharp-looking building, I don't know what is, but everything on that building, except for the far left red and the middle red, all that is corrugated metal. And this is not allowed on our project. That doesn't make sense.
So show me what yours is gonna look like.
I was gonna say, the problem, I think, Paula, or where maybe they would be coming from, is you're absolutely right, but corrugated metal, I could also show you a dozen buildings that look like a shoddy shack made of corrugated metal. And so they have to uphold standards to say, we don't want you utilizing this for this purpose to look like that. So yeah, if you presented an image that said, this is what we're looking and this is the minimal amount it's used, or whatever it would be, maybe that would fly. I'm not sure.
Unfortunately, it doesn't work. I presented that in my storage project and that was not allowed.
So are you talking about Cunningham?
No, Houlihan.
Okay. So, yeah, on, when Bacon Creek was done to...
Just a minute.
Yeah, okay.
I gotta agree with him. Why did we send it back? Because you're right back where you're at. I mean, you guys got what you wanted. You just got it the back doorway.
No, they wanted BP.
No. Well, they got the same thing. What they're making him do is exactly what he would've had to do.
Right.
So why did we refer it back if, if they're gonna, I don't know.
It was, it was your guys' solution. So you, you want a GI with a site...
But I, I made it clear that they should, I made it clear that I didn't disagree with them on the building standards. It's a nice transition into the neighborhood as long as the landscaping works. That's my biggest concern, which it sounds like they've addressed.
Well, yeah, the only thing we don't have, the only thing we don't have is the design, which Bacon Creek didn't have at the time. They just verbally told us it's gonna look like the, the storage building on Cunningham. And we were like, we already approved that. If that's the case...
Braveway?
Yeah. If it's, if it's, if that's the same design, thumbs up. I mean, that's fantastic. That's exactly what we wanted.
Again, I apologize. We couldn't attend the meeting, but that's just not the case.
So I thought honestly between then and then, maybe you guys had met and talked through some of those issues, but I, I didn't know. Either, either way, we went back to kind of the old way of doing it where we did site plan restrictions and this is where the commission did have an active discussion about, do we agree that it should be full general industrial? We did talk about the site plan issues, but the site plans related to buffer yard setbacks, all those issues were pretty much solved. The two lingering questions for us, and really for you now, is whether or not you want any design standards on this property and whether or not you want any use restrictions. We felt, planning zoning unanimously felt that we didn't feel comfortable with a full GI and no restrictions. We felt this, this building backs up to residential and some of the uses that are allowed automatically by right GI should maybe have some additional scrutiny if they ever change hands and they want to open a bar, they want to open, you know, something like that, that there should be some additional scrutiny on those type of businesses, given the proximity to residential. And also this particular lot, you can see from the street, so from a design standards perspective, it made sense that we have a decorative front. And I would say from a design standards, but I'm not an expert, but a lot of the pictures he's showing with corrugated metal, a lot of this stuff looks like it would probably pass P&amp;Z with flying colors because enlarged windows, decorative door where you've got a mix of brick and all that kind of stuff, all that calculates into a total calculation that says how much of this passes the 60% threshold so that you don't have to do 100%, you know, so that you can do some corrugated metal or you can do some sort of lesser, lesser siding material if you've got garage doors, windows, decorative brick that kinda make up for that. So I agree that all those look, look great and, and P&amp;Z has approved those sorts of things. But this is the way we were instructed to look at it. We think that there should be some use restrictions and we think there should be design restrictions. But with the site plan proposal that has been, that you guys want us to work through, it's your decision as to whether you want to hold those things in place or not and that, you know, it's your, your guess's call.
It goes back to the first meeting. Our whole property is zone GI and it makes sense this property to be GI.
It is.
And I mean, our, our track record is, I think, high enough to say that we do high-quality stuff. We already have plans to put four foot of stone across the front. We, we can do corrugated metal in the front, make it look more than just a machine shed and...
Can we get just an image to them so that we can approve this today and be done?
Excuse me?
Can we get an image to P&amp;Z of what it is so we can say if it's gonna be that, then we can get it approved and be done?
Uh, today?
Soon.
Well, it wouldn't go to P&amp;Z today, but yeah. Because it sounds like if those...
P&amp;Z has already acted on the item and made the...
He's already acted. He's got, he could show, we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily have to do second and third. You could approve it the way it is and then modify it if you like his building plan.
I would just say this. I mean, you guys can write it up that, like I said, we're gonna put four foot of stone across the bottom and we'll have garage doors across the front, doors across the front, and corrugated metal. I mean, if that's not satisfactory, you know...
And I, and I agree with Jason. I think all the properties you've done have been great. I mean, look at the bakery and how just even paint has approved that. Really?
But keep in mind, you know, the, the one down by Home Depot and the Al Haynes, you know, a lot of that work...
Looked like that?
A lot of that work was not what we wanted to do. It's because of the standard. All the buildings around us are all corrugated metal, but we had to follow the design standard because our property at that time was BP. This property is GI and now we're getting potentially penalized again and put into that BP when, again, our property's GI, it needs to be GI.
I understand your argument. I, I'd agree that it should be BP, which was my no vote last time, but I understand where you're coming from. And I'm saying, I, I know that they've looked great. I was more worried about the use, the other side of their argument, which is why it was a no vote was the only thing.
One of the members on P, uh, Planning and Zoning also mentioned to his other board members that, you know, there are ways to use corrugated metal and make it look sharp, but it falls on deaf ears of some of the other members and they don't see it. So that's why I brought pictures to help people realize that corrugated metal is not just a machine shed. It can look nice.
But I thought Jason said that they would probably approve it if it was something like that.
I can assure you, Alex, they didn't. They didn't approve my storage project.
Jeff, I have a question for you. Is this being picked up under the P&amp;Z's motion that it's limited to BP, Business Park uses and design standards?
Correct.
Is that how it got incorporated?
That was made in the motion.
That's how it got incorporated?
What's that?
That's how it got incorporated into...
Correct.
The design standards. Because all the other conditions are set out specifically, like the setbacks and that kind of thing.
Yep. With a site plan, when you do a site plan, they have to be.
Enclosure two on a site plan.
All those items have been...
Escaping buffer yard.
Yeah, yeah.
Those have all been addressed.
Yeah, that was, that was really easy, honestly.
What do you want to do?
Well, I, I thought it was gonna be more, and I appreciate the work you do, I really do, planning zoning, but I thought it was gonna be more than just making it subject to design standards of BP, just a blanket statement. I thought it was gonna be more specific. That's why I was reading while you were talking, because I thought, I think I missed the, that condition, but it's up here in actual motion of...
It, it was and there, there was discussion about all of it and, and honestly, there was some confusion about why are we doing it this way rather than just following the standard way where you could, you guys could modify those requests. There's, there was some confusion from the Planning and Zoning Commission, but the key question, which is the core of the disagreement, is use and design standard. And we felt like that was, we felt like both, both of those should be upheld, but we ultimately also know that if you guys don't want that, you, I mean, it's a site plan. You guys control the end product. So if you don't want that, you can go ahead and have it. You can go ahead, you can go ahead and make your modifications. It's not our final call.
But you have, you have it designed, correct? I mean, did I miss that point? You have the design.
That's correct.
We, have we seen that?
I don't know if you've seen it, Mr. Moore. Yeah, I, I mean, we didn't, we didn't have to turn it into council. We could. But like I said, it's just gonna be four foot of stone, garage doors, walk doors, and then corrugated metal.
Which way is the corrugated metal running?
On this project, it'll probably run horizontally.
And BP, how many, what do you have to have, 60% in the front or what?
Correct.
On Business Park, you have to have 60% facing the parking lot or facing the street. In this case, the parking lot and the street-facing facade are the same facade.
So if he's got four foot of brick and garage doors that are different color, he meets, he meets it, doesn't he?
He would meet the 60%, but the corrugated metal still would not be allowed and would require approval through P&amp;Z, but...
That's if it's following the BP standard?
That would be if it's following BP standard, but it's zone GI.
Under GI, we could do all...
What world is going to decorative metal but this city? I hate to tell you that. You can, you can be opposed to it all you want. Change the color of it. Make them, make them change colors and do that kind of stuff, but...
Decorative metal is allowed by right, so...
Well, but you, your definition of decorative, that's, that's to anybody's guess what that means. You don't want a metal building in Sioux City. And for entry-level contractors, it's difficult to have a building that you're not ever gonna use but storing your Bobcat in and spend that kind of money. I mean, then I, I appreciate that we should be concerned about the neighborhoods. That's why I'm, I'm concerned about setbacks, trees and all that. But the reality, they had bread trucks starting at 2:00 in the morning for 100 years out there, disrupting the neighbors with their lights on and, and engines running and all that sort of stuff. So I don't know that this is, I think this is probably better for the neighborhood personally. Do you like to have lived there when they had 28, 29 truck run? I had that downtown when Wonder Bread was across the street. Sometimes, some mornings coming to work, you had to be careful coming out of there. So I don't know what the answers are, but... I, I, this is not, I guess I should've been clearer to what I meant when it went to P&amp;Z, because right now, we're right where we were.
We are.
And that's not where I thought we would be today. So I'm gonna call for the question and get the plan so we can look at it before we do second, third reading. Get the plans to Jeff so he, his staff can look at them.
Jeff, you have the plans, don't you?
No.
When can we expect a decision?
Next week.
Okay.
First, first reading today and then second, third next week.
Okay.
So the first reading would be an approval just based on what was submitted, right, submitted originally for the site plan without any...
Second, thirds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Passes five, zero. We will not do second, third. Sixteen is a hearing and ordinance rezoning 3650 Crexionville Road. The petitioner is Doug Van Kier. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move it. Second.
Second.
This one is-
Oh, the hearing's open, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, sixteen and seventeen are really tied together. Um, and so we've got the zone classification changing, the zoning request changed for this whole development as well as preliminary, as, also for doing the preliminary plat. There was a lot of discussion on this one, a lot of neighbors came forward and were concerned about, I, I think it summed it up and you guys have it in your notes, a number of different concerns, that the current grading on site was causing problems for water drainage and just general messiness across the board. Questions about how water would be drained and, and how that was going to be managed once it actually was built. But there was a lot of neighbors who were frustrated with the current state of the situation. We, uh, we heard those concerns, those are in your guises, in your packet. We felt though, right now they're operating without a lot of restrictions from the city. If we went ahead and did the rezoning and set and, and accepted the preliminary plat, we could step in and we could do more to restrict the site, the grading, the control of runoff, et cetera, than we do right now. So we felt like it would be a step in the right direction, even though we knew it wouldn't solve everybody, every neighbor's problem at the moment.
Okay, who wants to be heard?
Sam Moose, thirty two twenty five Forty Sixth Street, Sioux City, Iowa. I'm a petitioner that's applying to do this work. My, my only reservation on this project is part of P and Z's approval was to have a sidewalk that, on Crexionville Road. The development would have a sidewalk, but clear from that, um, from the west, or from the east to the west side. Crexionville Road, there's no, there's no shoulder there, it's, the setback is, is very narrow where, I mean, setback's far, but the, the, the grade is not, is very, very limited on how narrow it is. So engineering proposed putting a sidewalk directly on the street, which the street is kind of a older street with no curb. And also there's no storm or gutter where the, there's places where the water would just drain over the top of the street. And then on the far we, uh, far west side, it's, would actually, the sidewalk would actually overhang a ravine that drops down about twenty feet, which would be, um, would be very-
Dangerous.
Yeah, I would, I mean, something would have to be more done, but, um, and then at one point there, in the middle, there'd be about a ten foot high vertical cut wall would be the only way to put in the sidewalk, but, and that's my only reservation. If, if I'm required to put that sidewalk in, I'm going to pull back and just do a few lot splits and not do the subdivision because it's just not feasible to maintain and, and safely have a sidewalk there.
But even if split lots, you're going to have to do sidewalks, right?
Well, then it would be an individual, it's not a, um, individual lot would be when they build, whether they determine what sidewalk goes in there. And, um, um, I would, I, I really don't know how the engineering approved. It just doesn't make sense at all to have sidewalks there, it's just not, I mean, if you got it off the road, I mean, you put in a bridge, I mean, at what point is it reasonable to have a, a sidewalk on a property that's not developed anywhere near the area to, to tie into nowhere that I could ever, for, for, see, see in the future for, it just, um, doesn't seem very logical.
Okay. Anyone else be heard?
Just to, to answer the, the question on sidewalks, that was raised as a concern from both the neighbors and also at the, the P and Z level. And, um, we've pretty much held that if, if we, if engineering feels as though that they can get a sidewalk in there with a, a degree of safety, we're going to be in favor of having sidewalks along the road or at Crexionville Road. They had declared, the city engineer was there, we asked them about it, we felt comfortable with their answer and, and we understand the petitioner, you know, doesn't, doesn't want to have to install sidewalks along the street, we get that. But we felt like it's better for the, it's more of a community issue than it is a single development issue. And so we don't know when development will show up and add more sidewalks. So we, you know, we're generally in favor of adding them now.
Steve Schultz, forty two hundred Green Avenue. Uh, just, well, take off with the sidewalk. We got tens of thousands of cars going to Bacon Creek, there's no sidewalk on Green Avenue. When I built on Green Avenue, I wanted sidewalks. I want this project somehow to have sidewalk. These moving thousands, hundreds of thousands yards of dirt and I can't believe that a sidewalk's the issue. There's bike trails that go from here to Lamar's all over the city. People walking, riding their bikes, traffic is out of control with speed. And so to go further on any kind of housing, there has to start being some sidewalks incorporated somehow up, up one side or down Crexionville Road and Green Avenue. I'm putting myself at risk, I have about twelve hundred foot of Green Avenue. I still want the sidewalk. I want to partner with the city somehow, get something so we have some structure out there. There, it's a hundred year old neighborhood, there just needs to be more thought. The thought of, the thought of all this dirt being moved under an ag permit makes my skin crawl. Because you go, I could see you moving terraces, I could see you adding farmland. They took down hundreds of trees, filled in, they're bringing all this, all this thirty acre, twenty acre, is all, all this comes to me, I live at the bottom of the triangle here. And there's no infrastructure for this water, whether it goes in a holding pond, supposedly the culvert's plugged underneath Crexionville Road. There's ultimately, there's a creek that comes down between the houses, goes across my land and into the creek. So these are all the concerns that I have. I'm not against the proj, the only thing that I would be against on the project is I know it's twelve lot. Now I hear there are possibly twelve duplexes. Maybe something I can't control, but there needs to be some clarification on what's going on and I would like you guys to get involved in any way, shape or form so that you don't just have somebody moving thousands of yards of dirt in the city with no control, no supervision. Water's going all over. I know they're trying to fix it with things, but I know if Doug Rose back here told you guys that this culvert was clogged, you guys would be fixing the culvert. So there needs to be some communication on the project to what is going on. I, I think it's a great project, but, um, when you start X-ing things that you don't want or don't want to do, I, I think those should have been in the planning stages instead of, it looks like we're getting ready to pour concrete on this particular development, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Sam Moose, again, not to, to respond to some of those comments. Um, one, I'm, um, first of all, they're not duplexes, I don't know who or what they're, this is actually a development that I, for my personal development, that my children and a couple of family members are going to be building on and they're all, I think the smallest lots are half acre, most of them are several acres. So they'll be individually family, family homes, but the, my issue with the sidewalks, not having, I think sidewalks are great. It's just this terrain right there on the edge of Crexionville Road is just not safe. I mean, the city wanted to propose and maybe put in a, a curb to separate the street from the sidewalk, to control the storm from going over the top of the sidewalk, because that would have no choice but to do now. It just is not feasible to have a sidewalk there. If I, it was a nice flat thing, I think it'd be fantastic to have a sidewalk, I would love to have a sidewalk. Gosh, how great would it be to have a sidewalk, great to, right to Bacon Creek and tie into that beautiful park. But this, to me, is not a logical place to add sidewalks.
Gordon, well, hold it, I'm surprised.
Steve Archer, forty one oh one Green Avenue. Some of this is going to be reiteration of what Steve said. The water control, it's gone from, it was static water with trees and a, and a nice culvert grass. Now it's free water. Needs to be addressed. The increase in road traffic on Green Avenue, Green Avenue is not a superb road to begin with. With construction equipment, concrete trucks, it's just going to continue to get worse. Uh, what else did I have? I, I'm also curious, I understand the city is ready to provide water to the site. There is no sewer. What is the status on that? I would be interested in-
I think we were told they'll have to have their own septic systems at each house.
Okay. And I know there's lot size requirements to get a septic in inside the city limits. Other than that, I think Steve touched on most of it. I'm not here to, uh, disapprove the project, I just want to be, um, I'm down here in the bottom corner. There's an elevation change of, pick a number, eighty feet. He's the diving board, I'm the swimming pool, I'm not comfortable yet with what's going on there.
And you're in favor, Steve, of those sidewalks on Crexionville Road?
I would not have a problem with the sidewalks. I, I understand his concern with the no curb, it would probably be a direct sidewalk road issue. But I think it could be dealt with. Other than that, that's all I've got, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thanks. Gordon, could you just, specifically the reason I wanted to bring you up was, could you speak to the safety concern about the sidewalk? Do you think a sidewalk there is possible? Sounded like you satisfied P and Z, I just wondered if you could share with us your thoughts.
Gordon Ferrer, city engineer. Yes, I, I do believe sidewalk is possible, that if you over on this portion right here is where this culvert is and, um, the amount of grading on, per their plans that they've submitted, the preliminary plans, that was going to be filled in with a drainage structure there. So a sidewalk could go there very easily and it could be away from the road. And then right around, where's my cursor? Right here on this lot, there's a large hill, there's, and it's downright vertical. It would take some grading, uh, to move it away from the road, but there's enough space to put it up, uh, for an, an A sidewalk, type A sidewalk, which would be up next to, um, it's kind of like a rolled curb gutter, an old fashioned, it's got like a concrete curb, uh, gutter swell, and then it's got asphalt in the center. Right there, it would be close, and then again, down here, I think it's on this property, there is, uh, unknown what he's doing there because it's not graded there yet, it's not part of the plans. But there, again, there's room there, it would be, uh, it would need some additional grading though, to do a sidewalk. As for safety, we have type A sidewalks all over.
Type A is because there is-
The ones where the sidewalk is right up against the curb. And if there's no curb, then it's a, like a rolled curb there.
Type A is right next to that roll curb and then it's on the inside-
Yes.
That off the street.
It's not a rolled curb, it's, it's a-
Got a little lip kind of thing there.
It's just a little, like, it's-
Like an angle.
Yeah.
Old highway curb.
On, on the, the, the east side, where there's about four feet before it drops directly down and the bottom of that ravine is a four foot by four foot culvert. So the only way to change any grading would be to extend that culvert into the property, I don't know however far, ten feet and bring in twenty, thirty foot of dirt to widen that out to make there. Right now, if you, before it starts dropping almost directly down is about forty two inches and then it drops pretty much, I'd say about an angle like, I don't know, at least a, more, more than a forty five, probably a sixty degree angle down to the culvert. That's, that's the dangerous part and then I don't know what they would propose, engineer proposes to do where the, the street dumps water back towards the ditch and to those culverts, what would be going over the sidewalk unless some kind of storm collection would be put in and, um,
This here is the curb. This is more like a swell here.
And, and that road, that road is only twenty foot wide.
Gordon, the sidewalk will be on the shoulder where grass is, right?
Yes.
And it will butt right up to that little swell?
Right, there is-
I just want to make sure we're all clear as what we're-
This is where the first crossing is, that's where they're filling in per their plans. Right here is where it would have to be graded back, but you could put one here, a five footer, we're not talking a ten foot trail. But it could be here. Down here is-
If you stop, go back just a little bit, you'll see the drainage, if they, I'm sure it'll show, go back now, face. There, there's one big that gathers all that water from that, and it's like a river. I just drove out there in this last rain and it just roars over the top of, that's about the only drainage on probably a thousand foot of road right there over that sidewalk.
Right here, right under this-
It's actually where the curbs cut out and it has a little, like, uh, it's back a little, it's not there, it's back the other way. And it's like, it's just kind of a poured in place curb that directs it into the ditch, which would be the sidewalk instead. Not on that side of the street, it's on the-
Right here.
No, the, the other side of the street on, on, going towards my property, but if you, I don't know if it's going to show it.
Well, it doesn't matter, I mean-
But it, but that's a, you can't have a street draining over the top of a sidewalk.
P and Z recommended sidewalks, is there anybody opposed to it? Because I got to tell you, I don't have nothing against your project, but I learned a long time ago, I'm not voting against sidewalks because sooner or later you need sidewalks and then they always look back and say, what dumb bunch of council members?
No, and I'm, and I'd say, if it was feasible to put a sidewalk, I just don't know who would ever, I mean, if you-
But you got, only got to put them in as you-
You only got to put them in as you build houses, right? Well, or, and now I guess they said if it's not done five years, then they'll, they'll, um, but my, my biggest concern, I don't think, for one, I don't like the sidewalk, that road's only twenty foot wide and people fly down that road, but, um, the-
Better to have them slide and have a sidewalk than my friend.
I was going to say, people are probably taking the road right now.
But on the edge of where that, that ravine drops, I, I mean, I don't know who's, and, and the water issue, the water drain over the top of it. And my thing is snow, when you're pushing, you got nowhere to push that snow except directly onto the sidewalk. It would take commercial equipment, equipment to keep it clean, it wouldn't, it would be not a feasible, I don't know. I just, I just feel like it's just not-
I understand, but-
I mean, I don't even, I mean, it's not very, rarely do you ever put a sidewalk on the street anyway. Especially when the street's only twenty foot wide.
And the way I would think of it too is, I mean, a bike lane is essentially, it's literally on a street, you're just painting it different. This is essentially a bike lane that's working as a sidewalk, you're just not painting it as that.
Drop off, dropping twenty feet on the edge of the sidewalk, is a railing required to put in next then or what, what would happen there? I mean, that would be more dangerous than, than anything. And then you have, and again, no, nobody's addressing the water being, there's no curb or storm that would be going over the top of the sidewalk.
Gordon, do we need to worry about any curbing or water going over? I mean, if you say we have these types of curbs, is it something that needs to be addressed at other properties?
We have a lot of them all downtown that have, um, sidewalks that are right up against the curb.
I'm not talking against the curb, I'm talking, like, there's probably a thousand foot of road that drains into one particular spot, then at the other end. So it actually becomes a storm gutter and drain for the whole street is the sidewalk. So there's no, nothing to gather that water.
Under the street or over the top of the street when it rains?
It goes right over the top of, goes right on the edge of the street and it just dumps right in the property to where those ravines are. And it has like a little square, square cut where they've molded the cement to kind of trying to funnel it. But when it rains, it just pours over the whole side of that, that curb when it really gets going. And if you look like back that way, it, I, it, I have literally, it's less, way, well less than five feet before it drops directly off. So I don't know what would keep somebody, I mean, if somebody fell off, stepped off the edge of the sidewalk, it would be a tremendous fall.
Well, this, this area right here.
Ditch.
It, it is a ditch, um, it is this portion, uh, right about here, where this hasn't been, none of the plans have been submitted for that, so I couldn't attest.
So the work hasn't, the work hasn't-
It's a lot split right there, that's, there's no grading plans, no nothing when, when those houses get built.
But you're grading on that already, aren't you?
No, there's no grading there at all. The only, the grading we did, we, where the road is, was the top of a hill, we took the top of that hill off and, and put it into a old ravine that was, uh, there for, for years. There's been no grading over there at all.
Weren't you grading close to Protexter's place, because she called.
That, that's, uh, wasn't, that's not grading for dirt, we, working with the state, they came out, that pond is about a- That, that's, uh, wasn't, that's not grading for dirt, we, working with the state, they came out, that pond is about a five-acre pond. Um, the DNR brought in, um, uh, geologists from Des Moines, and they took soil samples, cause that doesn't hold water, it leaks through underneath that dam, that's, which is a state-registered dam. So that's where the state came out and, when, anyway, we're going over the concerns, and they took soil tests on the, the hill behind Protexer, so that, um, dirt there is being, lining the pond to try to make it be, uh, be, and that's not anything to this project, that's with the state and that, that pond. That, that's nothing for development or anything like that, that's just trying to, to crea, uh, to stop the leak on that pond that's been probably original. Probably, they said they usually didn't line them with the intent to make sure they hold water.
I have a couple of questions, Gordon. Um, you said it'd be a five-foot sidewalk?
That's our standard, yes.
That's the standard, so we don't have to specify five feet. We don't have to specify five feet with...
No, we don't have to, no, that's our standard.
That would be the minimum?
Because I, okay, so if you wanted ten feet, you said you'd have to specify that?
Right.
Okay, and then, is there any other development along Correctionville Road that has sidewalks?
Uh, we actually just measured it, um, and it's about, on the south side of the road, it would be six hundred feet from this project, and on the north side of the road, it'd be one thousand feet from this project, or nine hundred and sixty feet from this.
Sidewalks exist?
That's the gap.
The sidewalks exist.
Uh, property to the west.
That's, that's, that map helps. Where now are we?
Chris Mattson, Senior Planner, what's in green is the development site.
Now, wait a minute, you're telling us that's the development site, but you're saying that by Protexer's isn't, so is it or isn't it not?
What's in green is what the petitioner is showing as his preliminary plot.
But I just asked him that, and he said that's not part of the development.
There's no plans for developing or grading, that's just, those are lot splits. There's no roads going in, there's no, no infrastructure put in.
What is the answer? Is it part of it or not?
Part of his development?
He says this, he says this is not.
It's part of the development site, but I think it's, what he's saying is that there's no grading being proposed. This is the grading plan that was submitted, he's not showing any grading as part of the development, but I believe there is some grading that was done as part of that dam.
Well, it's a part of the overall plan, but you don't plan on developing that pers, specific?
Those are, those are individual lots off of, off of, it's no, no road and no, no infrastructure.
The grade's not gonna change on them.
What has been submitted does not show grade change. Any, any grade changing would be during the, uh, would be on, when the house permit was, uh, be pulled, and, uh...
That's a way to get out of the grading permit, but anyway.
For the plot, it's not a complete set of plans.
Right, but all I have to do is take out a permit to build a house, and I can grade all I want to the, my heart's content, that's...
If you, if you...
It's part of the, just a minute, if it's part of the development, we oughta know what it's gonna look like. Because otherwise, you take out a building permit, and you can't stop them from grading the heck out of that.
Anything over acre has to, has its, has its, I mean, it's covered under a building permit, but it still goes through the same prop, process of grading and has this whip and all that.
Are those more than an acre?
If there's under an acre, then, then you're really not doing much gr, really, there isn't gonna be, it's pretty much the terrain, it's not like there would be much to change. It's just wherever the house would sit, and maybe, uh, to tie the road into, um, Correctionville Road.
Well, that, that's not entirely correct. Like I said, these plans are not complete. They have to include that portion for this preliminary plot.
They haven't gotten that part.
Or, or retention.
They haven't gotten that part yet.
I haven't seen them.
Getting that part, okay.
No, there will never be anything submitted until, cause who knows when or where, who's gonna put a house when and where on that property?
Are they more than an acre, that's the question.
There's like, five acres, I think.
Are they more than an acre?
Yeah, they're, well, I think the one's five acres, the other one's like four acres.
Okay, then they will have to bring you grading for that, then.
If they, they, yeah. For the sidewalk, uh, again, this is the petitioner's property that is being developed. Uh, all of this property is owned by Mr. Schultz, uh, who just spoke, um, saying that he would want to put a sidewalk on there once this property develops. There would be one gap, and then the green down here is existing sidewalk connections.
How about, how about Correctionville Road?
Yes, and I think I misspoke, yeah.
The west, the property to the west is Mr. Moose's property, um, who has met with us last March to talk about developing that. But ju, and at that point, there is about a, a gap of, well, it's just a couple hoses over, so it's what is, five hundred feet, I think we measured?
Yeah, what we said, and Dan, I misspoke, so...
To the west of where you're talking about, Correctionville Road?
Up high, he is.
I just wanna get, yeah, I just wanna get Correctionville Road, how about going east?
Uh, going east, there's none.
There is na, not a sidewalk.
That's the problem, if you remember, Joe Corey comes and tells us how fast traffic goes, and there's no sidewalks.
Yes.
Nothing to the east. So eventually, there will be a connection there going east, or not?
Well, I think that'd be everyone's hope, but, you know.
And then what's the width of the Correctionville Road right-of-way?
I don't know the right-of-way.
It's quite large. Hundred?
The actual road's only twenty foot wide, but just...
It's a hundred-foot right-of-way? So you wouldn't have to go right near the Correctionville Road, would you, with the sidewalk, or?
Only where it's physically, like, like you said, if it's a drop-off or sheer cliff, you'd have to move it, the sidewalk back in, it'd be in and out type of thing.
If there had to be curbing, would that be the city's expense, or would that be the development?
Part of his property, no, that would be his.
The, so I'd have to put curbing for Correctionville Road?
If you wanted it, we're not requiring it.
And, and to, as far as the storm or the drain just going over the sidewalk, that's just...
It doesn't go over the sidewalk, I have no idea what you're talking about on that.
You don't, you don't mean, when you, when you said it's part of his property, you mean it's part, it's adjacent to his development? He doesn't own the land where the sidewalk's gonna be constructed?
Yeah, that is...
You said it'd be part of his property?
Part of his property would be, of his development, would be to put in curb and gutter if he wanted it in there, on Correctionville Road.
But it'd be on city right-of-way?
Yes, but that doesn't...
But just like those guys at Elk Creek, they had to...
Yeah.
Not, not on their property, though.
Yes.
Well, he's saying in the right-of-way, you got a hundred-foot of right-of-way.
No, I'm just correcting Gordon, he, he earlier said the sidewalk would be on the developer's property, it's not on your property.
It's in the right-of-way.
Cause you have a hundred-foot right-of-way.
I think he did.
Yeah, it'd be in the right-of-way.
And, and that's the problem, where it goes back to where, I don't know how, I mean, that water, there's nothing gathering that water other than it dumps across the road on, and it actually goes completely onto my property, that would be going over the sidewalk, and that's a substantial amount of rain and water that would be continually, I, I just don't know how you could have, without going at the expense to put in curb and gutter, um, to gra, gather the storm water and actually get the storm underneath the sidewalk, which, again, and then going back to that ravine, I, I just can't imagine a sidewalk being on the edge of that ravine, um, where you would be, you would directly fall twenty feet down if you stepped off.
Where's the council, we're gonna move here, where's the council on...
Well, I, I just wanna say one more thing, and I'll be quiet, but, but everybody's saying sidewalks for safety purposes, safety purposes, safety purposes. So you'd wanna make sure that it's gonna be designed for that, that something just isn't put in.
I, I can promise you right now, I wouldn't feel comfortable, my kids or grandkids are walking on that sidewalk on the edge of that.
I, I understand, not all sidewalks are actually safe, but we do the best we can with, with what we have. But putting them right against the street, I understand what you're saying.
And it's not, and that's a big part of it, but the water, and then, uh, that ravine, it's not, there's not even five foot there, it's gonna, you'd have to do a thickened sidewalk where on, on the edge to try to, it would be, you immediately would fall two feet and then down the twenty feet. It, it just doesn't, I've just never seen a sidewalk like that anywhere, anywhere. And then again, do you put up railing, or then what point do you, when is it feasible or, or logical to put in a sidewalk? I mean, gosh, a bridge would be beautiful across that, but that costs two million dollars, you know what I mean? It's just like, at what point do we say, this isn't a logical? And I think if anybody drove down that and seen it, and literally, when you have to get out your car, you'd drive, and you'd see how that falls the ravine, you'd think, yeah, I don't know how a sidewalk could go there.
We got some awfully close to the...
But there's curbs, and there's storm, and there's gutter, and it's not the issue on the other side of it either.
Not everywhere in town, we're a, we're a, we're a community of a lot of ravines and pu, and...
We absolutely are. I, I just don't see, I just don't see that being the best place to bring in a sidewalk across.
You'd wanna ha, you'd wanna take a close look at it. If we pass this the way it's recommended, it has, uh, provide information as needed to city engineering, what does that mean? Provide information as needed to sin, city engineering?
There, I think, uh, from the planning zoning perspective, there's two issues that needed to be solved, was que, was the question around the safety of the sidewalk. Sa, the sidewalk came up, we had a verbal report from them that we could do it in a way that would meet some sort of state standard, and I think the other thing related to all of the grading. And that, essentially, that, there was also the culvert issue being, and that was also like, how is the water gonna flow, how are we gonna solve that problem for the neighbors? So I think we referenced engineering and their report to tie that in as, as a, as an, uh, on all those issues.
So that includes the drainage?
Yeah, it included drainage across the board, uh, as well, and so, but, but, you know, that's why city engineering was there, and we were grateful they were there to answer a lot of our questions.
So they're got by grading because it's ag ground right now, and you can go grade ag ground?
Yeah, that's how... Why we're having such drainage problems now. I, I would also like to point out, I think, a practical, um, uh, issue related to sidewalks. I don't think the Planning and Zoning Commission was under any illusion that no one is walking Correctionville Road at all. Right now, if you're going down Correctionville Road on anything other than a, than a, than a car, you are either walking in grass or you're riding a bike in the street. Either one of those are safe, so a sidewalk makes it better, and I think that, that was part of the other piece of our logic.
Thanks, Jason. Thanks, Gordon.
Steve, again, from forty-two hundred Green Avenue. The biggest problem is, and I don't know if this is more than not, that addition, maybe a bike trail or something. I'm just saying, there's people that walk every day up and down Green Avenue and up and down Correctionville Road. Right or wrong, there's no place to walk, but it's happening, I live right there, I'm watching it. That's why we're here, so I don't wanna exclude, and I know I'm hanging myself, cause I got twelve hundred feet to put in, but it's still the right thing to do. And whether you do it or not, people are walking up and down, if you, I, we can bring pictures if you want, cause it's happening.
Appreciate it, Steve.
Anyone else?
Well, and this is just for the rezoning, what we're...
Yeah, yeah, just wa...
Not for waving the sidewalks.
But it's with conditions, is that the sidewalk then portion, Jason?
Sidewalks are in, you're voting what the P and Z...
The sidewalk, the sidewalk relates to, to the second issue of the preliminary plot.
Gotcha.
It passes with sidewalks in, Sam, you want us to do second and third? You gonna drop the project, and we'll, we'll, we'll wait, what?
And Sam, I would just say I'm supportive of the project, I think it's beautiful, and actually, I had a friend reach out, interested in one of your lots, and if you were gonna be doing it to the public. But I would just encourage you, if you can work with our engineering department to talk about what a sidewalk could look like, I think it'd improve that area. Obviously, you have people and neighbors that really would like to see that sidewalk, so if there's anything that can be done. I know you own that land to the west, you know, and if you develop that in the future and connect that sidewalk, you're less than a thousand feet away from existing sidewalks, so...
My, my biggest problem with this is, this literally came, the sidewalks we discussed at DRC meetings three months ago, and the, these issues were brought up, and the way I understood, it wasn't gonna be going forward, cause it, the issues that were brought up, there was even people in the meeting that were, they're talked about, Hamilton Boulevard with that big straight-up-down cliff, and what a nightmare that is, and, and it's, honest to goodness, it's not about the forty thousand dollars with the sidewalks, it's just not feasible. I don't know how you could maintain it, I don't know how you could, and the drainage of the water, nobody, and he still never says, and he says there's no drainage there, which obviously, anybody who drives by, you'll see this huge gutter, and where's that water go except dumped over the sidewalk? That's my issue of trying to keep and maintain a safe sidewalk. And the idea that a sidewalk's safer, but if a sidewalk that makes you the illusion that you're safe and not realize, to me, is worse than knowing that you're on the edge of a curb and, and have to be concerned. I, I would just ask anybody, and that's my biggest problem, I, as far as I know, engineering still hasn't drove down there and actually looked at the, the site to see where that water is, and see that ravine, and see how a sidewalk would look in there, and I could be wrong.
Well, I, I can assure you, I can assure you that they've driven down there, and I just drove down there yesterday. So I mean, I saw it yesterday, and they've drove it as well.
And that ravine doesn't seem crazy scary to, to have a sidewalk that would actually be overhanging that ravine by a good foot, that, that's my, my concern.
Yeah.
Now, whether, now, even if we said, okay, let's put a sidewalk from, um, the edge of the property along, I'm fine with that, but to be, have a sidewalk anywhere near that ravine, that just doesn't work. And maybe someday, if it ever comes through, and we put a, and somebody wants to put a path in there, and we, they spend the money on a bridge, I think it would be fantastic. But to, for me to, to have to put in a sidewalk that, I, I just do not feel is safe or feasible, I mean, I just, and I'm not even that...
Well, and I didn't, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to get you upset about it, I just wanted to voice my support of the project and let you know that if you want to do a sidewalk, I think engineer would be happy to talk with you about options.
That, that's, I just, and like I say, I don't know how you have a sidewalk that, that would be, what, I mean, at what point do you have to have a railing? Or what, what's required there, and, and, and nobody, still, we've talked about it, that he says that water doesn't drain over the sidewalk when there's nowhere else for it to go. I don't understand that answer, because the water, you know, it goes somewhere, it's, you know, it's in a valley, goes, the hill goes up, and it doesn't go down the road forever, it dumps over, and you could actually see it if you went out there and seen where the water, the curbs cut away, and you'd have, I don't know, hundreds and thousands of gallons of water just dumping over the top of the sidewalk, which would not be, um, and which, I don't know how it'd even be allowed, but you basically having your sidewalk be your storm drain.
Thanks.
All right, well, I'm gonna move, we defer seventeen...
How about one more lady?
No, go ahead.
You can come speak, ma'am.
Um, Terry Doughty at forty-two hundred Green Avenue. I'm gonna start off with assume goodwill. Assume goodwill, right? So, we're all for the project. I believe Sam just said there's thousands of gallons of water flowing over, so there is water. The culvert does, he said that the ravine was dried up, it's not true. It goes through, under Correctionville Road, down through property, under Green Avenue, crosses all the way through our property, and down into the ravine. So, I agree, we probably need sidewalks, but I also think that we need to look into the culvert situation also. There's eighty acres there, sixty acres, forty acres, where's that water going? Where are we draining that water at? We wanna make sure that we're assuming goodwill from the city, so we need to make sure that the water is draining the proper way, right?
Correct.
So, as Sam said, there's thousands of gallons of water coming down. We gotta make sure that we take care of the Green Avenue people and the Correctionville Road people, okay? Thanks.
And I would just say, we, we, just so you know, I mean, we spoke about it in our Public Works meeting, and we talked at length about that. The reason that the culvert isn't being cleared at this time is because there aren't any way to stop all of that mud from going down into your property. So we don't wanna clear it right now without those things in place. Um, we, we think the property owner definitely needs to put so, those things in place to mitigate that water. Especially, cause I mean, now, like you said, the, Steve said, the trees and everything were there to stop that before, and it's not there anymore, so...
Right, so then, I mean, that culvert's really old too, I mean, even, I mean, our property used to be a brickyard, how awesome is that, back in nineteen fifteen? So there's a lot of brick there too, but the culvert's there, and the culvert is very old. Um, we just wanna make sure it gets to the, to the creek right, I mean, instead of going into our properties.
And I think that's where, and city engineering was wanting to work with the property owner before clearing the culvert, to make sure that proper things are in place to mitigate that, so it doesn't all wash under your land, but I just wanted you to know, they're well aware of that as well, and wanna work with the property owner in clearing it, but...
No, that's great, cause I think we're gonna add, I mean, we wanna add houses too, on there, so that's, it'll make it...
Gotta do it responsibly.
Hundred percent, thank you.
Hey, Jason, I have a question for you on the rural residential, the one acre per unit, what, what lots are those?
So if, uh, if he wants to pull up the...
And then the suburban residential, the six thousand square feet per unit?
Yeah, so the, uh, reason is, is primarily due to the, to the size and the quantity of the number of, of, of units that he's, that are gonna go in. The suburban residential fits for the prime, the primary, where he's gonna build his, build his development, both in size and in also characteristics. The rural residential are larger, larger standalone lots where there isn't being proposed multiple, that, that essentially a standalone one-house can do. So it, it, it fit kind of this, it, it did, we asked that question at Planning and Zoning, and, and it made, after staff kinda walked us through the logic of it, it made sense that there are some parts of this that are gonna be single-family and have large lots. Um, and then the other one is gonna be, uh, is larger, but is gonna have more homes on it across the board. Does that answer your question?
The one with the cul-de-sac?
Yes, the cul-de-sac, uh, yeah.
Where you have SR on it, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
No, that answers it, thank, that's what I thought, but I wanted to just make sure it was clear.
Yeah, and we had the same question. It was a good one.
Thanks. So that was, that was item 16, correct? 17 is, we have a motion. Do we have a second for the deferral?
To defer for one week.
Second.
And that's just to make technical changes or something? Is that what you're saying?
Well, if, if he drops a project, it doesn't matter.
Oh, okay, okay. Thanks. Defer for one week.
March 14th. Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
18 is a hearing and resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for issuance of GO bonds, GCP dash one. I'll move that. Second. Hearing's now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. 19 is a hearing and resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of GO bonds, GCP dash two. I'll move that. Second. Hearing's now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Hey, Jason, practice up. I don't want to beat you again in that trivia. You got to get.
Slaughtered us.
You got to pick it up a little bit. Five is zero. 20 is a hearing and resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of GO bonds, GCP three. I'll move that. Second. Hearing's now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. 21 is a hearing and resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for issuance of GO bonds, GCP four. I'll move that. Second. Hearing's now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. We used to do these all. Passes five zero. 22 is a hearing and resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of GO bonds, GCP dash five. I'll move that. Second. Hearing's now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
Did mine register?
Yes.
Blinking on me.
Passes five zero. 23 is a hearing and resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of GO bonds, GCP dash six. I'll move that. Second. Hearing is now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. 24 is a hearing and resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of GO bonds, GCP dash seven. I'll move that. Second. Hearing is now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. 25 is a hearing and resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of GO bonds, ECP. I'll move that. Second. Hearing's now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. 26 is resolution authorizing issuance of GO bond series 2022 and levying a tax for the payment. I'll move that. Second. Passes five zero. 27 is a hearing and resolution approving construction documents for the Milwaukee Roads Shops Historical District Railroad Museum Trail Improvement Project. I'll move that.
Second. I have a question.
Hearing's now open.
I'm sorry. You've got to open that hearing. Will you just refresh my memory? Because it seems like we've had this before. And then, did we defer it or did we?
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director, this project has come forward once before. Bids were, exceeded the budget for the railroad museum. So we rejected, modified the project, and now it's coming back to council for official adopt and approval.
So it's much closer to the plan budget?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Anyone to be heard? Hearing is now closed.
I felt like you've been there too.
Passes five zero. 28 is a hearing resolution approving the lease of Green Valley and Floyd Golf Courses, DeFlore, Green Valley Floyd Golf Corporation deferred from February 28th. I'll move it. Second. Hearing's now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
Thought you were sleeping, I was going to jump in.
I saw you were ready.
Believe it or not, you probably wouldn't move it after the last round. No one was to be heard on this?
No. Oh, hearing's open, no one to be heard. Hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Presentation by MetroNet.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Marty Doherty, Economic and Community Development. Today, we want to share some news with the council of, of a coming significant investment in Sioux City from a company known as MetroNet. They're a large fiber optic company in the United States and. So with us today is Kathy Scheller, who is the Director of Government Affairs from MetroNet. She's come all the way from Indiana to make this presentation to you today. I think it's an exciting announcement and introduce, we've been working with the company for a few months now. Introduce them to you and to, to the community.
Welcome, Kathy.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. My name is Kathy Scheller and I'm the Director of Government Affairs from MetroNet. I'm going to go through a brief presentation with you now and just to explain who our organization is and the impact that we believe we're going to be able to make in Sioux City. MetroNet is the fastest growing, largest independently held fiber optic company in the nation. We are headquartered in Evansville, Indiana, got our start in 2004 and currently serve over 125 communities in 13 states, including Iowa. What we offer is blazing fast symmetrical internet, which means you can upload and download at the same time. Our lowest offering is 200 meg symmetrical. Our highest at this point is a gig symmetrical to the home. We have a real passion for customer service. We found that to be very effective and, and has helped us do extremely well, especially in Iowa. We have over 290,000 customer base. Fiber versus cable, now more than ever, we understand the importance of broadband capabilities, especially what we've all been through these past year and a half. What we're able to do is bring fiber optics, brand new infrastructure into Sioux City. Reliable, fast broadband, simultaneous streaming, distance learning, telecommuting and more. It's future proof. We will manage our own network once we bring it in and it's the latest technology available. Again, this is a full investment on behalf of our organization because we believe that we can make an impact in Sioux City. Fiber benefits, I, I found this to be interesting. If you have the ability to access a gigabit fiber symmetrically in front of your home or behind your home, your home automatically goes up to 3.1%. Exclusive access, only 40% of the homes in the United States have access to symmetrical gigabit speeds. Competition, and I'm sure that you understand that this is a very important component of that, this allows your constituents to have choice. And we believe that we can come in and be a good citizen and a good competitor here in Sioux City. What we do is we measure our speeds whenever we are into, in a particular city. And, and a third party measures how fast we're able to conduct our speeds and we are historically in our communities, the fastest average speeds. A MetroNet community like Sioux City will benefit from a high level of customer service. Again, we are measured on that. We are 30% higher customer satisfaction than our peers and markets. Broad availability, we're going to really be building out the majority of Sioux City once we come here. We will have a local presence. We like to be a part of the communities that we serve. We like to get involved philanthropically in the community because we believe that's a win-win proposition. You'll get to know us and our corporate culture and we too will get to know Sioux City. Superior fiber services, again, as I mentioned, it's the best technology available, symmetrical speeds, pricing, more for the same, no long-term contracts, and we, we ring our communities, which means we provide redundancy. Should an act of nature or something cause a line or fiber to be hit, we can rotate and move that traffic across the board. MetroNet recommends streaming video. Now, more than ever, a lot of people are what, what we call cutting the cord. We have a really robust program to explain to residents how that works and we explain it very in detail, not only once we're coming into a community, but also through our website. One of the things that's really important when we come into a new city is communication. And I've been working with Ann and members of the city to talk about the importance of letting residents know what is going on in the public easement or right of way. And we have a very in-depth construction communication plan. You can just Google MetroNet Communication, Construction Communication, and you will see how robust it is. Residents from Sioux City, whenever we start constructing here, will be able to go to that site, click on it, and also be able to see where we're constructing throughout the city. We have a really big point of communication for all of the residents. What we like to do is this, once we work out with the city and staff on permitting a particular area or neighborhood that we're going into, we will send those residents, before we ever get started, 30 days out, a letter saying who we are and what's going on in the public easement. After 30 days, when, when we're two weeks out, we will also send them a postcard, a very bright postcard that you see up there. All of this directing your residents away from City Hall and to our 800 number. Finally, right before we get started, we put what we call a yard dart in the yard with our 800 number, with our website, for them to be able to see that. The yard dart is very similar to when you get your yard, you know, worked on, you know, from the lawn care company. It looks like that. Very, very, all of it directing everybody to our construction communication website. responsiveness, we have 95% plus response rate within 24 hours. And what's really great about this and what staff will appreciate is, once we get started, we have a way to track just why the residents of Sioux City are reaching out to MetroNet. More so, your staff will be able to come in and tell you, was it for restoration? Was it just questions? What are we looking at? What was the, you know, how, why are our residents reaching out to MetroNet? So it's very powerful and we do that every month. In addition, we'll also be able to tell you monthly how much fiber we're deploying at any time in the city, both aerially and underground. Restoration, we realize that restoration is extremely important to residents and we have a very, we restore as we go. So we restore within 24 to 48 hours of going into an area. Our crews are clearly identified. We provide the city with what we call street sheets, so you will know exactly where a MetroNet crew is at any given time. Again, there's a construction website. It's a real great opportunity for residents to take a picture and download them. Also, it's great for them to, to have questions or concerns. There's videos on this website that talks about what this type of construction looks like and it's very detailed. Finally, our go-to-market plan. We believe in consultative sales. We get involved in different communities, different HOAs for them to learn about who we are. We have our website, which I'm sure that you'll see some links to in coming days. And we're really big about customer service, as I mentioned recently. I'll be working very, very closely with your communications department here at the city to find out the best way to educate your residents on another competitor coming into the marketplace. Again, I wanted to show you that we really believe in safety foremost and we really work very, very hard to achieve that. We've also achieved some accolades in our work, not only in Iowa, but across the 13 states that I mentioned. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, how'd you pick Sioux City? I'm just curious.
Yeah, sure. We, we started, our first place that we went into Iowa was in Bentendorf in Davenport. What we do is when we, we have a very robust business plan when we start to evaluate a city. And we look for cities that we believe that we can make an impact. So the investment is all ours. We looked at the growing aspect. I was talking with Marty about how you're a growing city. We like to look at development, which we've heard a lot about that this evening. We like to look at how your city is laid out. How does the density look? All of these things really prompted us to make this multimillion dollar investment in Sioux City.
How long have you been in Davenport?
We've been in Davenport, I would say for probably about five years.
Okay, thank you.
It's exciting.
Yeah, and we, we look forward to being, coming a part of the city as well. And again, I've had the opportunity to look around. It's a very vibrant city and we're really looking forward to it.
Starting in Marty's neighborhood first?
We always get that. We always get that mayor, but you know.
I think I should say, starting, when you're starting.
Yeah, so we are, actually, we're in the design phase of it and we'll be starting late. We have a construction meeting with staff on the 14th of March, so you'll start to really see us probably in late spring.
Oh, wow.
That soon, very nice. This is the first I've heard of symmetrical speed. So that's the coming in, downloading and uploading, sending in.
Same speed. Especially for people working at home. Yeah, especially for people working at home. It ended up being a really, a big game changer for them because so many people are having to do that, yeah.
First I've heard of it.
And so homeowners, if they're interested in this or the possibility of this, they don't need to do anything as far as contacting you as of yet. It's just kind of wait for the construction plan to go and then you'll be doing a lot of communication with city staff and otherwise.
Correct, correct. And, and there's two websites and I'm sure that I will be getting that to Ann as we, after our construction meeting, but we have our regular website that people can just go on there and look at our products and services, and then the construction website, but we will reach out to residents as well.
Great.
Will you be having any like public meetings or open houses for, for citizens? I know you've got the 1-800 number and the 95% response rate is, is really attractive, but will there be that human presence too?
Yes, you know, we're always interested, and, and this is something else, city workshops, neighborhood where they get together, we are always interested in, in having that human presence as well. And you'll be seeing us, I mean, once we come here, there's an economic impact, right? We're going to be hiring people to work for us. We'll be hiring technicians. We'll be hiring people to go and call on businesses. So there'll be a real impact locally in, in how we get involved in Sioux City.
So feet on the ground, here, local employment?
Yes, yes.
In terms of utilizing the infrastructure that you're putting into place, what, what is kind of the procedure for another company that offers fiber? Are they allowed to use your lines? Do they pay you for access to the lines? We work well with other fiber companies with city assets because we have our own fiber lines.
We do, we work well, but typically what we do at this point, right, this, this industry is rapidly growing and changing very quickly, but at this point, we manage our own fiber. So typically, our other fiber providers in the city, other, but we work with cities should they need our assistance, but typically other fiber providers manage their, their own as well.
So if, let's say I had your service, two houses down, they had your service, and my neighbor wanted to go with another company, they would have to have their own fiber line?
Yeah, and so if, yes, if they wanted to go with another company, now, what we're bringing in is this infrastructure. That doesn't mean people will necessarily take it, but it's available there for them. So yes, if somebody wants to go with another fiber optic provider, that's fine, but they don't have to take us once we're there. But it's good to know that there's an option and, you know, choice.
But that other company would have to be present, though.
Right, they would have to have their fiber there as well. Correct.
So essentially, if we had five different fiber providers in town, we could have five different lines going through every yard in town? different lines going through every yard in town?
Well, I think what we're talking about, when we bring our fiber in, we go in that public utility easement, okay? That's where we go. And that's typically why we engage permitting and the city on that, because they monitor that. But yeah, so then what will happen is our, we'll be, we'll be like in a central area in a, between some houses. If someone wants our fiber, then we would just pull that, our strand to their home. We're a direct fiber connection.
And then I have, I have one more, and I'll, I promise. You talked about community involvement and community service, and we are a very community-oriented city here. Can you speak to some of the things that you've been involved with in other areas? How you've been involved with the community, or how you've helped to support the community?
Sure, and you know, and this is interesting. I'm pretty engaged. We're in Lexington, Kentucky, and they wanted to really work with us on, you know, part of the reason of the digital divide is education. So you might have, people might have access to fiber, but they don't understand the importance or impact of that. So what we do is we look city by city to find out what is the unique needs of Sioux City. Okay, in Lexington, just an example of something that was very impactful, they had a community center that was in a particular area. Our fiber was going by there. We lit that community center for Lexington, and we partnered with the University of Kentucky to have their students come in and not only talk to them about the impact of fiber optics, but also mentor them. The program has been extremely successful, and we're going into our sixth year with them. So that is one opportunity. So I'm always looking forward to hearing different ways that we can impact a particular community, community center. In North Carolina, they have a center where businesses come in, small businesses, it's called the Core Center. This week, we're going to announce that we are lighting that building up, and they're going to help new businesses that are starting out have accessibility to that world-class fiber optic infrastructure. But we also do other, anything from sponsoring a team for baseball to sponsoring, you know, rooms or buildings or any, all goes across the board, but we're very, very excited about being able to make an impact in the community.
Good to hear. Thank you.
MetroNet Expo.
Thank you, we appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Thanks for making the trip.
Thank you so much. You're glad. Thank you, I've enjoyed it.
We have a lot of fiber we want to rent or sell, you know, don't...
Okay, I got that. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew?
I went to the Pancake Day for Seland Youth Hockey. That was amazing. I can't believe how much they filled out the dice.
I was, too.
That was just elbow-to-elbow. You couldn't find a place to sit. There was delicious pancakes. The place smelled amazing. I think if they could do Pancake Day every day, they'd probably fill the house because it was just amazing. Wednesday at five P.M., Difference's Dialogue, Women in Business, that is coming up. I won't be able to make it to that one, but it sounds like it's going to be a pretty good time. It's at the Public Library. And the Mayor's Youth Commission is painting murals in the Skywalk. They started last week. It's that long stretch of Skywalk that doesn't have anything on the walls. I would invite people to get out, especially since we have cold weather coming this week, and take a nice trip through a heated Skywalk and have something nice to look at for once. That's exciting.
Julie?
Um, today, I just want to reflect a tiny bit on discussion today. And, you know, at times, it seems like we might be going back and forth, for example, today with a couple of developers. But what really we're doing is we're doing our job and making sure that the decision that we made today and that we continue to make weekly on these projects, we're looking forward. We're looking forward two years, twenty years, thirty years down the road. What is the decision that we're making today? How does that impact the community going forward? So as the mayor said, there's been too many times that say, oh, the council or the decisions that were made in the past weren't looking forward. And I think our commitment on this council is we're so committed to that, not making those same, I can't say it's a mistake, but those decisions. And sometimes we struggle because the developer's before us, and they, they want to develop and they want to do it if we could just change these couple of things for them. But to go forward and to make sure that these standards are met, they're met for the citizens going forward, look at the people on Green Avenue. They would rather have had the sidewalks put in way back when, and now they're going to, you know, retrofit them or whatever the term is. So the decisions are hard, and they're not made to hold people back or to change their mind on developing. They're made for the future of Sioux City and for our constituents and future neighborhoods that are coming. So it's hard sometimes, but that's why, that's why I vote that way. That's all I have today. Thanks.
Well, and especially when you're talking infrastructure. I mean, we had this situation with roads and everything else. I mean, the investments that you make and how long it will last. And yeah, talking with Public Works today, I mean, it just seems like a losing battle sometimes trying to get back to where we are on roads best enough. Seems daunting, but I think, yeah, to Julie's point, I think you didn't make one right step and then another, because, Mayor, I can't imagine, yeah, going back and probably looking at projects, and then you wish you had sidewalks, and then when they're not there and trying to enforce that, it's, if you can't incentivize them when they're wanting to make the initial investment, you're probably never going to incentivize them enough to be able to do that. So to not have that all fall on the backs of taxpayers, I think, is a positive thing. Even though I think all of us would say we're for a project that would be any more housing in our community, I think we're, we need as much as we can get, that's for sure. The only other thing that I was going to bring up, because I was also going to mention the event on Wednesday, I'm hopeful that I'll be able to go there. But the other thing I would say is NAIA opening rounds start this weekend, and so that's exciting. I'm looking forward to it. I know Morningside is a host site for this first initial round, so Morningside will be playing at six P.M. on Friday, and then there will also be games on Saturday. Briar Cliff is in Missouri, I believe, and I think their game is on Saturday, but don't hold, I would look down at Pete, and he would probably know if he's listening, but yeah, he can't answer today, so. But yeah, good luck to those.
Cory's been bowling green if you were one.
Are they? They were tough. So I'm looking forward to watching some of the action and then ultimately bringing those top teams here to Sioux City and welcoming them in our community. I think it should be a lot of great action, so I'm looking forward to it. The last thing that I would just say is, and I know that Matt is going to be discussing litter dash and things like that coming up, but I would just really say, as we roll into the spring, I think a lot of us notice a lot of trash and a lot of debris around our community. And so I would just implore our citizens, our businesses, our corporations, get behind those different movements. I know that Dan will even remember this from back on his time with Downtown Partners, and we've done a lot now, where, you know, having that quick litter pickup every week, trying to get people out to make sure that they're doing their part to keep our city clean. In the springtime, it's really, it's, it seems like a big task, but if we all work together, I think we can really present it, present it well, especially when you're holding events like NAIA and bringing people from all over the country. I would just really ask everyone to maybe do their part and clean up the city a little bit to welcome those, those players and coaches and family.
It's a community job, you know, for each of us to pick something up if we see.
If you all pick up your corner, yeah, we do a lot better.
Yeah, it's for everyone to pitch in.
It seems like the organized efforts work the best.
They do, they do.
And when you build a sense of community, I've noticed a lot of, like, even the chamber now goes out regularly, or different groups will go out at the company and then maybe come back or have a couple hours off early or something. Anything we can do. That's all I have.
Nothing further, Mayor? I would like the council to think about if we can get additional housing and our only cost is a fence along that ravine, which I think is our responsibility, by the way, because that water flow, at the end of the day, you could say it goes across private property, but it drains a whole lot of area in that bakery. I think you should look, work with Mr. Moose and see what the cost of that fence would be, because I don't blame him. I wouldn't want that liability somebody throwing down in that, yeah. And, and maybe that's our responsibility to at least look at the cost of that fence along that ravine.
Some kind of a railing or preventative.